I went over this like three weeks ago.
You opened the door for it.
I bet that's a fast dog.
What do you think, man?
Okay. Ready time. Would you call the road, please? Thanks. Okay, I didn't see it. Thanks for telling me.
In that rain, we got about two weeks ago.
Yeah, would you call the road, please? Robert Kraus.
Present.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Kathy Griffith.
Here.
Terry Kavner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Janie Mylum.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item C on the agenda is a proclamation declaring April eighth through the fourteenth, two thousand twelve as National Public Safety. And I'll read this, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, and emergency medical services, and whereas an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from the citizens who telephone the emergency communication center in the city of Moore. And whereas, the public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring that, their activities by radio, providing them information, ensuring their safety. And whereas, the public safety dispatchers, Moore Emergency Management, and Communications Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, the sus- excuse me, suppression of fires and treatment of patients, and whereas, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, I, Glenn Lewis, Mayor of the City of Moore, do hereby proclaim April eighth through the fourteenth, two thousand twelve as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the City of Moore in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Thank you. Mayor and Council, in case you haven't met her, I'd like at this time to introduce Virginia Gilch. She is our nine-one-one supervisor.
I'm sorry if I'm a little slow. I was doing some of that supervising and ensuring last night. Haven't had much sleep since, so, but we are very proud to serve the City of Moore. And we hope that at some point or another, some, you will all come and visit us in the dispatch center so you can see exactly how we're working. And we are looking forward to our new facility.
Good. We are too. Thanks for the job you do. Appreciate it. And I'll be good. Thank you. Item number two is a consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held March nineteenth, two thousand twelve. Item B is receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting held February fourteenth, two thousand twelve. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve in the amount of one million, six hundred ninety-nine thousand, two hundred, two dollars, ninety-five cents.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Second. Thank you. Everybody get their claims questions answered, any notes or changes to the minutes. If not, we have a motion and a second. No discussion. Would you call the road, please? Jason Blair.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Janie Mylum.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis. Yes, item carries. Item number three is consider Moore Vision twenty twenty Comprehensive Plan Amendment, number thirty-one, located in the southwest quarter of section fourteen, township ten north, range three west, being south of Main Street and west of I thirty-five from low dens- density residential outside I thirty-five corridor to light commercial and medium commercial inside I thirty-five corridor. Application by Oklahoma Land Company, Ralph Tyler. Planning Commission recommended approval of this item six zero.
Mayor and Council, items number three and four on your agenda are companion items. The two subject property parcels are located along the I thirty-five service road, just north and south of Main Street. Parcel one is currently vacant. Parcel two is developed with a non-conforming billboard sign. The applicant has no proposed use for parcel one, however, he will be applying to ODOT for an upgrade to the existing billboard sign on parcel two, and that will include an LED changeable sign face. In order to do so, the lot must be in compliance with the current zoning code. And I would refer you to map seventy-one, to page seventy-one for a map, so you can see the parcel one and two. Parcel one does have access to sanitary sewer only. There is no water currently available to serve this lot. Parcel two does have access to sanitary sewer and water, however, the use of a billboard does not require the use of water or sewer service. Access is provided by the southbound I thirty-five service road, Main Street, and Claussen Avenue. And there is no flood plain located on the property. The properties are currently designated in the Moore Vision twenty twenty as low-density residential because C two and C three uses are considered to be light and medium commercial in nature. An amendment to the Moore Vision twenty twenty is required. The land use of parcel one and the electric condition in general was considered in detail in the development of the Moore Vision twenty twenty. At that time, it was decided that the electric addition, although it was adjacent to I thirty-five, had no commercial encroachments at that time, and that the housing stock was quality to sustain continued residential use. That would be an asset to the city. So, that's a general explanation as to why both these parcels are designated as low-density residential. The applicant contends, however, that the subject parcels are not necessarily suitable for residential development being located in such close proximity to I thirty-five, and because of their unusual shapes and size. However, concerns have been raised about the negative effects of the commercial development in the electric addition, and this does include issues of light trespass from the LED billboard sign and any other commercial uses that might, that might be located on parcel one. Another concern is the creation of a transitional neighborhood where commercialization creeps into the interior of a neighborhood, and the quality housing is turned over to commercial uses. The Planning Commission, Planning Commission considered these items on March thirteenth. They did recognize the importance in preserving the electric addition as a residential addition. However, that they did consider the LED billboard sign as appropriate because of its existing use as a billboard sign. Like, the light commercial use for parcel one, although not ideal, the Planning Commission did determine that could, that could coexist with residential uses through buffering. What was discussed was a twenty-five-foot landscape buffer on the west and south side of parcel one. And I do have a map of that on page seventy-five of your council packet. The reason that Planning Commission did determine that parcel one could be utilized as light commercial was because it is a vacant piece of land. It's located along the interstate. It was never developed as a residential lot. This should not be considered as the Planning Commission wishes as a carte blanche for commercial transition of this neighborhood. This is a very specific request and a very specific site. But they do recommend approval of both items three and four contingent upon the applicant issuing a landscape easement as a buffer on parcel one, which is south of Main Street. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Was it staff's recommend, excuse me, was it staff's recommendation to approve this?
Staff recommended to research the item carefully. We did provide in the packet some information that was collected by the applicant on LED signs as far as the light trespass that is generated or possibly generated. But we did request the Planning Commission, ultimately the city council, look at this, look at this issue and, and make a determination based on the best facts you have.
Basically, both the tracks that we're talking about are not usable for any other purpose. They're, they're just quite, quite, quite sort of junk pieces of land. But, uh, for, for years, there has been a billboard on that one parcel that's north of Main Street. And it's so old that it's in need of repair and so forth. And, yeah, and I think the applicant simply wants to upgrade what's there and, uh, but he may want to address this.
We have a couple people signed up. I'd like to speak. Craig Fane?
Who do I address?
Uh, me? He can, he, go ahead if you would, state your name and address for the record.
Craig Fane, five oh eight southwest second.
Thank you, sir.
I'm opposed to it. The, the properties, it's, it's never maintained, and the City of Moore has been mowing it for, for a couple years, anyway. I know that we missed the Planning Commission meeting. It was my fault why I missed it, but the day of the meeting, or the day before the meeting, the City of Moore was over there mowing that lot. I went over and said something to him, hey, why are you on mowing this lot? It's, you know, it's private property. Anyway, Ralph sent his crew out the next day and, and they took care of it. But if you drive by there right now, I mean, it's, it's as tall. And an LED billboard, I think, is, it's great in an industrial area, but a residential neighborhood? I'm, I just don't think that, I think there's other places for an LED, an LED billboard up and down I thirty-five, on the south end of Moore, on the north end of Moore, but not right in the middle of Moore. That's, that's all I have.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, Robin Fane? If you would, please state your name and the address for the record so they can have that later.
Okay, my name's Robin Fane, and I'm at, I live at five ten West Main. So I live about a hundred feet from that billboard. So, um, I know y'all are talking about, you know, maybe you need to upgrade and, and that kind of thing for that billboard, but, I mean, I'm a hundred feet from it, right in front of it. I mean, I'm, it's gonna be like, I mean, it is definitely gonna, um, it's gonna be bright in, in, at my house. And I just don't feel like that's a place for an LED billboard. I think that we should put something like that more in the commercial area. I, I, like, I'm the fourth generation living on Main, Main Street, and, um, it, I just want to preserve that as the old town of Moore and not get so wrapped up into the city and the, and the expansion that we don't take care of our old neighborhood. Because that neighborhood, we have potential on that street. We have young people starting to come in and fix up the houses. My house is very well maintained there. But, um, anyway, I, I, I've been told that I'm not gonna notice the light, and I'm just, you know, I just don't think that I'm not gonna notice a, that size of billboard a hundred feet right in front of my house, so. Um, my other thing is, is just that that property's never been maintained very well in the first place, so, who's gonna maintain the new, um, on the south side, they're talking about putting in some kind of something over there. Who's gonna maintain that? The city or, um, the property owner? Who's gonna maintain that?
It'll be the property owner.
The property, so that would be Ralph Tyler, they will be maintaining that? So, and can y'all tell me why the City of Moore has been maintaining both sides of the property there, either side?
Sure. When the, the owner doesn't maintain the property, we send code enforcement out to mow it, and we put it on the tax lien.
Okay.
So, that's what normally happens.
Okay, so they haven't been?
I don't, I don't know on that particular piece of property, but that's what we do. We have a, a mowing crew that goes around any residential or commercial property that doesn't, is not maintained. We actually pay someone to go out and do that and take care of it. And like I said, we send them a bill, and if they don't pay it, then we attach a lien to their property.
Okay, well, then, then we're gonna take the deal of, um, he, he's gonna do some landscaping over there for us even though either side has not been taken care of?
The way that will work, that tract on the south side of Main Street, even when that's ever developed, there will be a platted landscape easement. And that will have to be a part of whatever's proposed, which I don't, conversations I've had with Mr. Tyler, I don't think he has any plans for that tract on the south side of Main Street. But the reason that's in there is to protect that neighborhood, the electric addition that you live in, to give them a buffer, even when that was ever developed. I don't think it's big enough to develop, personally.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't think that it's big enough to develop either, but...
And then we had issues there. A gentleman bought that property in Portis Lab and was advertising on weekends. Well, that's not what we wanted to see happen there. So that was placed, that was a requirement from the city. Elizabeth put that in as part of the approval is a landscape buffer for those residential homes to the south and west.
I mean, I, I would love that. Anything to improve the area that I live in, I would love that, but, um, I just want to make sure that, you know, if, who, who is gonna be taking care of that area? Is it really gonna be done? There's gonna, I mean, there's, there's a lot to consider with, um, you know, I mean, to consider the residents, the old ti- the, my, we've owned that house since the fifties. There's people, other people on the block, there's some grandchildren that have inherited the homes or starting to fix that. I mean, let's just not neglect that area if we're trying to preserve some of our historic areas in Moore. Let's, you know, let's not let, you know, not an LED billboard in front of all of our houses. It's, it's not gonna help our property, I mean. And it's, it's gonna be intrusive to, to me personally, and, and I know the neighbor's right around, right around me, so. Hate to be run out of my home.
Sure. Thank you very much.
That's really about all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Drake, what kind of billboard is over there right now? I'm trying to think of it. I can't think what's up there.
It was initially put up by First National Bank here at Main and Broadway years ago. And then I assume Mr. Tyler bought it at some point, and now it's just, it's as large a billboard as allowed by our regulations. I don't know the exact dimensions. Do you, Elizabeth? It's a large billboard.
One of those real big ones you see from the interstate, I guess?
Right, and it's, it's been there for probably twenty-five years.
Yeah, so it's adjacent to the interstate down there.
Okay, okay. Well, anybody else that, was there anybody else signed up?
There's no one else signed up. Anybody else want to speak on this issue?
I make a motion that we approve. I agree.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? How about a motion to table? I would like to see, I, I-
I'm thinking the same thing.
I would like to see it at night, what it looks like now and what it looks like, uh, just south, down in the south part where they just installed two of those things, what it looks like at night. I don't, I have no idea.
Most of your light on an LED is gonna be in front, not behind, I think, uh.
Yeah, I don't know. I've never, I've never looked at one. I've, I've closed.
I don't see it, uh, flowing backwards into the neighborhood there.
Yeah.
And, um, it certainly looks as well, if not better than what's presently there. But, uh, if, uh, you buy the better comfort level for everybody, like, I wouldn't be at First Table.
Do we have any other similar LED signs in town?
There's several around, yeah.
Same size? Elizabeth, where's the, where's the best one that we can, I could go by some evening and look and just kind of see how it lights up the neighborhood, do you know?
Well, they are in several different locations. Probably the one that I think of first. Home Creations off of Broadway.
Okay.
North Broadway has just put one up. They're actually using that as their accessory sign, not a billboard sign, but it looks just like a billboard sign.
Basically the same size as what?
It is. It is, uh, gonna be very close to the same size. And that is LED, especially when you're going from the south to the north, it's changing. And that'll give you a good indication as to what you can expect.
There are also two signs on the south, one going on I thirty-five, one going- There are also two signs on the south, one going on I thirty-five, one going south and then another one as you're coming from the south.
Don't we have that by a wellows, I guess, or?
Yeah, I, I know it puts out a, a lot of illumination on the front, but I've never paid attention on the backside. I, I don't think I know what it does.
Was, wasn't there a discussion at Planning Commission about the light pollution, Elizabeth?
Um, there was, and there was a, um, report that was included in your council packet. Uh, it was provided by the applicant. Um, but quite frankly, we don't have any, um, experience with LED brightness and foot candles and, and things to do with light trespass. So after reviewing this report provided by the applicant, I do feel like it was informative. Uh, you can make your own decision as to whether or not it really will do the light trespass, but.
Well, I know pretty personally, I, right now, I'd probably vote no on it, just cause I don't want neighbors to have the brightness of the sun in their, in their house at night.
Yeah.
If we go by and take a look at it at night-
I understand, I understand that fully. Uh, but, uh, and maybe we can, uh, further study the document on the light trespass issue and stuff.
Yeah, I might do that.
But, uh, the, the other part of that property, uh, and Mr. Tyler's, I think, a fairly recent purchaser of that property, but it's, it, it's, uh, been poorly maintained for years, particularly that sound portion.
Yeah, okay. Do we have a table in motion?
Make a motion to table this item.
Alright, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, would you call for the table, Bill, please? Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Kabner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Janie Mylan?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis? Yes, thank you. Item's table, item number four is-
So just to clarify, was that for two weeks?
Yeah. I just, I, I just wanna go see it and, uh, I, I don't wanna, I, I'm, I'm like everybody else here, I don't wanna force something on somebody that's already living in the neighborhood. I wouldn't want that thing shining in my yard either. So I wanna-
For you citizens that are here for this item, it'll, should be back on in two weeks.
Two weeks.
So if you guys wanna come back and speak again.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you for coming.
Item number four is a companion item. You'll have a table motion for it.
Make a motion to table item four.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discuss, well, there's no discussion. Would you call for the vote, please? Terry Kabner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Janie Mylan?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item is table. Thank you very much. Item number five is considered the final plat for Royal Rock, Section Four, located in the southeast quarter of Section Twenty-two, Township Ten North, Range Three West, being north of Southwest Nineteenth Street and west of Telephone Road. Application by Rural Park Business Development LLC Randy Ballenport. Planning Commission recommended approval of this item six zero. This is in Ward Three.
Mayor Council, this final plaque consists of five commercial lots on sixteen acres. This section of the Royal Rock Edition is located south of Southwest Seventeenth Street and north of the existing commercial development that is, uh, taking place along Southwest Nineteenth Street. It does take in the property that is developed as the Royal Park Moore Mobile Home Park, uh, which is just north of the commercial area on Nineteenth Street. Uh, the applicant vacated the public easements and rightaways through District, uh, Cleveland County District Court in two thousand eight, uh, to make way for this development and the applicant will be relocating twenty-three mobile homes from the site to other areas within the Mobile Home Park. Uh, water and sanitary sewer are available and will be extended through the site. There is a FEMA one hundred year floodplain located on the eastern portion of the plat and detention will be provided. Access is profo, proposed from both, uh, Southwest Seventeenth Street and Max Morgan Boulevard that will be extended north to tie in to Southwest Seventeenth Street and this will be done as a collector road. I should note that this is a critical project that was identified in an overall tra, traffic impact study for the Nineteenth Street Telephone Road intersection. Um, this will allow for an alternative route around the intersection, uh, that will ease traffic congestion. Additionally, cross-access easements should be provided within the addition, uh, to access Lot Four within the development. Uh, Stafford wins approval of the final plat. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Alright, thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Anybody opposed to this? Nobody have signed up? No, would you call for the vote? David Roberts?
Yes.
Janie Mylan?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Kabner?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item, uh, pass, excuse me. Item number six is considered the final plat for Rock Creek, Section Six, located in the northeast quarter of Section Nineteen, Township Ten North, Range Two West, being south of Southeast Fourth Street and west of Sunny Lane Road. Application by R and R Land Development LLC Rocky Clark. Planning Commission recommended approval of this item six to zero. This is in Ward One.
Mayor Council, this, uh, final plat consists of eighty single-family residential lots on twenty-one acres. This does result in a density of just under four lots per acre. Uh, this section of Rock Creek is located south of Rock Creek Section Five and east of Rock Creek Section Four. Uh, this is west of the Sunny Lane Business Park. Water and sanitary sewer are available to the site. Uh, a sanitary li, lift station is proposed to sewer the southeasterly portion of the property. There is no floodplain located on site and detention will be provided. Access is provo, proposed from a local residential street, Southeast Eighth Street, as plotted in the Rock Creek Section Five Edition. Uh, the applicant does have several vacant lots under his ownership and they will be used to construct a street stub to access this addition. An emergency access road is proposed accessing Sunny Lane through the existing Sunny Lane Business Park. A street stub is provided to the vacant tract of land to the south of this property. Uh, this is known as the Urbanski property. Uh, the street stub is to provide for increased access, uh, whenever the Urbanski property does develop. The applicant is proposing to include buffering from the residential addition to the, uh, heavy commercial park to the east. This will be comprised of a site proof fence and landscaping along the eastern rightaway of what is shown as Daytona Lane. Stafford wins approval of this final plat. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Now, just to clarify, this is the same property that had talked about being a, um, senior citizen project?
Correct, and he came back to, um, make it single-family and this is, um, very similar, practically identical to the lots that are in the previous sections of Rock Creek Edition.
That was my next question, cause that's what we told the residents, we, that's what we approved.
Now, Elizabeth, how many homes is it?
Uh, it is eighty single-family, uh, homes on twenty-one acres.
Got it.
Okay.
I make a motion, where is it, was there anybody signed up to approve, or?
Is there anyone signed up or would like to speak against this project? No, no one's signed up.
Okay, well then I make a motion to approve.
Alright, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this one? No, would you call for the vote, please? Janie Mylan?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Kabner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is considered Moore Vision Twenty Twenty Comprehensive Plantament Number Twenty-nine, located in the southeast quarter of Section Seven, Township Ten North, Range Two West, being north of Northeast Twelve Street and west of Sunny Lane Road from rural residential to low-density residential. Application by Justin Rhodes Homes. Uh, Planning Commission recommended approval of this five to one. This is in Ward Two.
Mayor Council, items number seven, eight, and nine on your agenda are all companion items. Uh, you may recall that this, all of these items, um, came under consideration originally at the February fourteenth Planning Commission meeting. Uh, it then came to March the fifth, uh, City Council meeting with a recommendation of denial from the Planning Commission and, uh, during that time, the applicant made some changes or revisions to the final plat to address some of the concerns that the residents had, uh, and the City Council did decide to send it back to the Planning Commission for further consideration, uh, given the revisions. Uh, so, uh, that's what we are hearing today. Uh, this property is located on the north side of Northeast Twelve Street. It's between Bryant Avenue and Sunny Lane. The applicant is provo, proposing to develop a single-family residential addition on eighty acres. Uh, it is approximately two point five lots per acre. The concept includes common areas, a detention-retention pond, and clubhouse for the residents to use. Both water and sewer will be extended through the site on Northeast Twelve Street. Uh, the developer will be providing a lift station, uh, for sanitary sewer. Access is provided by Northeast Twelve Street. It's a rural arterial roadway. Uh, will have two entrances. A floodplain is located on the northwestern portion of the property. The developer proposes to leave this area in its natural form as a common area. Uh, it's also to act as a natural bus buffer, uh, between the, uh, this property and the properties to the west and north. Uh, the property is currently designated in the Moore Vision Twenty Twenty as rural residential. R one uses are considered to be low-density residential in nature and an amendment to the Moore Vision Twenty Twenty is required. Uh, it should be noted that since the first Planning Commission meeting in February fourteenth, uh, the applicant has revised his plat to reduce the overall densities in the development. Uh, the revised plat takes into consideration many of the concerns that were addressed by concerned citizens who came to both the Planning Commission meeting and the City Council meeting on March fifth. Uh, these are gonna be the overall densities of the plat, um, have been reduced from two hundred and sixty-five homes to two hundred and fifteen homes. Uh, that's gonna reduce the densities of the addition from four units an acre to two point five units an acre. Uh, he decreased the number of lots abutting the Lost Creek Edition from twenty lots to sixteen. Uh, the remaining lots are heavily wooded in the rear between the Lost Creek Edition and this addition. And the interior streets were revised to show greater connectivity throughout the addition and this does satisfy the Moore Fire Marshal and E O C Director requirements. Uh, the growth trend of Moore has been predominantly eastward. Moore Vision Twenty Twenty understands that as the city grows and utility services are made available, the land use designation and the corresponding zoning can be reconsidered by the Planning Commission and City Council and amended as necessary. Uh, this is just such a case. Uh, to the east of this property, um, the property is zoned R two, uh, which does support duplex, uh, development without City Council approval. Uh, to the west of this property is the Lost Creek Edition, which is zoned as R one. And this is the exact identical zoning to which this request is being made tonight. Uh, there were four property owners at the last Planning Commission meeting. Uh, they, uh, continue to express concerns regarding, uh, the densities being too high. Uh, they expressed concerns about an increase in traffic, um, and a decrease in their property values and overcrowding at the local schools. Uh, the applicant has made changes to the plat, uh, to specifically address these items, uh, which is what you're hearing today, the two hundred and fifteen lots. Uh, he has made these changes to decrease the densities and to increase the open space. Um, this is done directly to address the citizens' concerns. Uh, the Planning Commission, um, after hearing his revised, uh, application, did, uh, recommend approval at the last meeting at a vote of six to one. If you have any questions, I would be more than happy to answer them.
I have one. Um, what is it that defines rural residential? How many lots per acre?
Rural resi-
We've, we've, we all had this discussion before.
Sure. Uh, rural residential is defined in the Moore Vision Twenty Twenty as A one, um, A two, so you're really looking at, um, an RE. So anything from three quarters of an acre on up to, you know, A one is however many acres you can get. Um, so that's what the definition of rural residential would be.
So it's three quarters of an acre or larger, basically?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Alright. Okay, do we have a motion on this item?
Is there any protest to this?
Oh, anyone wanna speak? There's no one signed up. If you would, state your name and address for the record, please.
David Box, five two two Call Core Drive, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Justin Rhodes. And just to touch on a few points that, that Elizabeth mentioned, um, the first time we were at the Planning Commission, there was a, a great deal of concern, uh, by the neighbors, mostly from the, from the west. Uh, there was a handful of people from the east as well. Uh, and since that time, we've now dropped fifty lots and we're now down to two hundred and fifteen lots, which is only two and a half units an acre. Um, there was a gentleman to the west that initially was, uh, against the application and with our new revision, he's now in support of the application and, uh, has withdrawn his protest. Um, the gentleman to the east, uh, was not at the Planning Commission hearing and there were a few people from the Lost Creek Edition and that's, uh, the packet I handed out. I want to just touch on a few points. Starting on page three, these are a series of pictures that I took, uh, from the Lost Creek Edition. And as you can see, this is what, from, from the Lost Creek Edition, looking back to the east where our development will be, uh, what you see. And there is a significant tree line that will be preserved, uh, that will provide a, a great buffer to that addition. Um, that addition is zoned, single-family, which is exactly what we're asking for. Uh, we're actually less dense than the addition to the east and the addition to the south. So we feel at two and a half units an acre, we have a very low densely, low-density, uh, single-family subdivision that is appropriate for the area. Um, and with that, I answer any questions that the council have.
I just appreciate this being sent back to the Planning Commission and if I can, if I can look at it, um, I don't have an issue at all with this development.
Looks like a nice development.
Yeah, I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Thank you. Did, did anyone, there's no one signed up to speak against it? Anyone wanna sign up, or anyone wanna speak against it? I didn't ask. Okay, do we have a motion and a second? Would you call for the vote, please? Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Kabner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Janie Mylan?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item number eight is considered rezoning application number eight eight two, located in the southeast quarter of Section Seven, Township Ten North, Range Two West, being north of Northeast Twelve Street and west of Sunny Lane Road from eight to rural agricultural district to R one, single-family residential district in approved ordinance number seven one oh eleven. Application by Justin Rhodes Homes. Uh, Justin Rhodes, Planning Commission recommend, recommended approval of this item five to one.
Make a motion to approve.
Alright, thank you very much.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please? Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Kabner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Janie Mylan?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is a companion item with the same thing. Consider preliminary plat for S, uh, Sonoma Lakes Edition located in the southeast quarter of Section Seven, Township Ten North, Range Two West, being north of Northeast Twelve Street and west of Sunny, Sunny Lane Road. Application by Justin Rhodes Homes. Justin Rhodes, Planning Commission recommended approval of this item five to one as well.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please? Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Kabner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Janie Mylan?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?[1700.54]
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Thank you. Item number ten is consider awarding bid number one-one-two-dash-zero-one-one, temporary employee services to Standby Services LLC.
Mayor Council, this is what we do yearly. We request bids for our temporary services, temporarily help us with our mowing and stuff. This year, Standby Services come in with the lowest bid at eleven dollars and eighteen cents per hour. The company we use right now is First Staffing Group. They came in at eleven dollars and fifty-two cents per hour. I don't have any reason not to accept the lowest bid. However, I think there is someone here that might want to talk about that, so.
Yeah, he's signed up, or she's signed up. Kathy Seijers?
Good evening. My understanding is the Standby did come in at a lower rate, but if you do a comparison, apples to apples, they're paying seventy-five cents less per hour to the employee that's out there doing the mowing and the weed eating and the trash pickup and working at the animal shelter. So, at a minimum wage, they're asking someone to get out there in a hundred and six degree weather and work. We pay eight dollars per hour for the labor, and that's why we came in at thirty-four cents difference. So, there's a difference. If you want to compare apples to apples, our bid is lower if you take the markup. We have a one point four-four markup where they came in at one point five-four, thereabouts. I just wanted to point out those differences and let you know that where we have been providing the services for the last couple of years, and I wanted to let that be known. Does anybody have any questions? I think it's important that, yeah, there's an eleven eighteen rate, and it's lower for the city, but overall, the quality, we pay weekly. We don't pay daily or next day.
I think there's some merit to what this lady has said as far as pay to these employees. It's beneficial and cost-saving to us if we get some people who will stay with us, who learn the job, and you're not, you know, just weekly retraining a new employee. But I don't, Richard, I assume we've got a good track record with this company. I'm not...
We have employees out that have been there for a couple of years and over, and they're really liked, and others change from time to time. I can't guarantee you're going to have the same people forever and ever, but we do have long-term employees that have been on the job.
Yes.
That's my next question is to Randy. Randy, it's the best bid, right? Lowest and best?
Yes.
So, we could pick either one, right?
Yes. Justify...
Will we get sued?
Justify, for instance, as to why you would go with a higher, a higher bid.
Do we have any information on the company with the low bid?
We have used that before. It's been, I think it's before you got there.
About three years. We've had it for approximately about three years.
Three years, it's been for a couple of years in the runoffs.
The only reason our bid went up was because of the unemployment over the last couple of years and insurance costs. It's just a matter of figuring it, but we do have a lower markup, the one point four-four markup.
I don't think we've had as many problems the last couple of years with mowers, have we?
No, but another option, we could, we could take the low bid, and if it doesn't work, then we can make the change, if y'all feel uncomfortable.
Well, I will tell you that the employees that I have placed now have voiced the concern that they cannot go from eight dollars an hour to seven twenty-five an hour. They would have to leave and find a job somewhere else, just because, I mean, seventy-five cents an hour is a lot to ask someone to, to cut, you know?
I think this council's always prided itself on taking care of its employees as best we can, and I think we'd be doing a disservice to the employees if we took less money or paid them less money for the same work that we've been paying for. So, that's my opinion. And I know in the past, when these guys get paid cash, the next day, the next day they don't show up.
That's okay.
Comes a lot, especially when it's a hundred and two out in the summertime, and they're supposed to show up to mow, and they don't show up to mow. So, and it's like, where you at? I'm sick, or whatever. It's like, I quit. We've seen that a lot.
In today's society, it's tough to find laborers who want to do this type of work. We're struggling now with permanent employees in those, in parks, man, and public work.
As long as we can do it legally, I don't have a problem staying with them. We can do it.
Okay, we'll make that in a motion.
And we're comfortable we can do that?
Yeah, Randy said we could.
It's on Randy, he's the one getting sued, not us, right?
How you want to see it one more time?
No, it is possible. You place your reasons as to why you're not going with the absolute lowest bid.
Right.
Place those in your motion as to why you would be going with the next highest amount or third highest amount, whichever one is chosen. You can select from the lowest and most responsible bid.
I like, I like the word responsible.
Is this the second highest or the second lowest, I guess?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I make a motion, I'm sorry, do you have, okay, I was going to make a motion to go with the second lowest bid, as I believe it will provide better services and be a more responsible company to meet our needs.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Janie Mylum?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you.
I agree, thank you.
I'll cover it right, Randy.
Okay. I lost my spot. Hold on. Item number eleven is consider awarding bid number one-one-two-dash-zero-one-zero, landscape maintenance for Riverwalk area and Old Town to Todd's Lawns and Landscape in the monthly amount of nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. You going to do this?
Two D's in Todd, just for the record. This is one D. All right. I have the correct spellings. Thank you, Mayor Council. This item is for the landscaping of Broadway in the Old Town area from northeast Third to southeast Third and along the Riverwalk Channel from McAllister's Deli roughly to Alfredo's. We had a mandatory pre-bid, February twenty-eighth. We had three contractors there. We received one bid in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-five dollars a month. It's a one-year contract, and this is about three hundred and fifty dollars cheaper than our current contractor. We checked references for Todd's Lawn and Landscape. The references were great, so we expect really good things from the contractor, and we'd recommend approval or acceptance of the bid, please. On behalf of taking questions, you might...
The last guys last year set the bar pretty high on this. They did a good job.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts?
Yes.
Janie Mylum?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number twelve is consider awarding geo-bond issue project number four in northwest Twelfth Street between Janeway Avenue and West I Thirty-Five Service Road to the lowest and most responsible bid.
Mayor Council, this is our fourth geo-bond project. It's from I Thirty-Five to Janeway. The existing four-lane will tear out and rebuild with a five-lane, re-signalize city avenue, and realign that intersection where it's offset to the north. And we had a good turnout at the pre-bid. We did receive seven bids on this project, and staff recommends the bid be awarded to ATEC. And we would take, also recommend we take the base bid, which is concrete, and it's for one million eight hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, and a, one, one million eight hundred and forty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars. There was only fifteen thousand dollars difference between the asphalt and the concrete, and that's the reason we recommend the concrete. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them. And we will not start this project until we get northwest Fifth Street there in front of, from Telephone Road to...
Thanks.
Yeah. Janeway.
That's a good idea. We really mean it, too.
I'll make a motion to go with ATEC with the concrete base.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Have we used them before?
No, we have not, but we have, Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates, who was the design engineer on this project, met with the principal in this company last week, and he submitted references, and I called one engineering firm who had done work with the city of Moore on a previous project, and then I called the Public Works Director of the city of Norman and got rave reviews. They're a smaller company. This is a bigger project than they normally do, but we've been there with other companies, and we've been successful taking smaller companies, so, and I mean, it wasn't just a recommendation, it was a strong recommendation, so we feel comfortable with ATEC.
Good.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Janie Mylum?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes, yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we'll recess the City Council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number thirteen is the consent docket, excuse me. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held March nineteenth, two thousand and twelve. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve in the amount of one million four hundred thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars fifteen cents.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Excuse me.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Everybody get their claims, questions answered, or any changes or notes to the minutes? If not, we have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Janie Mylum?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item fourteen is the consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held March nineteenth, two thousand and twelve. Item B is approve payment of a workers' compensation settlement in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars to Carla Farmer for claim number two-zero-one-zero-dash-one-three-eight-six-five-Y and two-zero-one-one-dash-seven-four-two-two-R. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve in the amount of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars sixty-five cents.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Excuse me. Any other notes or changes to the minutes, or any claims, questions that you didn't get answered before? If not, we have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Janie Mylum?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the City Council meeting. Item number fifteen is new business, citizens forum for items not on the agenda as item A. If there's no one signed up, would anyone like to speak? Item B is items from the City Council or trustees. Janie, I understand this is going to be your last meeting, and we didn't get the plaque in in time, but we do have a couple little things for you.
On behalf of the City Council, I just want to say thank you very much, and this little gets me a little bit of a kick, and I'll, I'll do that. And we expect you to keep continuing doing things, just not care going away.
You just don't get that hundred dollars a month.
Yeah. You're going to lose that hundred dollars.
Well, it's been an honor and a privilege, and I certainly have a lot of respect for the people sitting around this table, as well as the city staff. You are amazing people, and I have a lot of confidence in you, and I have trust that you will continue to make this city the best that it can be, and you will do what is expected of you. And I appreciate working with you for the past few years, and we'll miss seeing you.
Well, we appreciate it.
But I'll still be around. I'm still very active in the community, and there's a lot of things that I'm planning to continue to do.
There's lots of stuff to do, we know that. So, we do appreciate you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Any items from the city manager or trust manager?
Just a few announcements. The More Beautiful Tree Sale will be April the twentieth at the Community Center. The Arbor Gardens, which some people know as the Arboretum, if the weather cooperates, we'll have a parking lot there this week, and the public will be able to access that park. That's long overdue, but, and it really turned out to be a beautiful addition to our park system. And I would urge all citizens to bear with us and be patient in these construction zones. We know it's an inconvenience, and we don't like it any less than you do, but we had a construction worker hit by a vehicle today over on northwest Fifth Street, and please, please be patient. And we do our best to move traffic, but to build a roadway, sometimes there has to be inconveniences. So, just be patient and bear with us, and think when it's done how nice it will be. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Item sixteen is adjourned, so move.
Second.
Thank you, both. Would you call for the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Janie Mylum?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, we are adjourned.
Thank you for mounting your call.